Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I call to order the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council, and I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We do have Pastor Robert Lee Collinswood Agape Baptist Church to provide our invocation. Would you all please stand, and after the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We pray that your presence will be felt here today as we discuss business for the citizens of Portsmouth. We pray that you would take charge of every thought, every word, and that all that's said and done will be said and done to your glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucasburg.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting, June 14, 2022, a regular meeting on June 14, 2022, a special called meeting on June 16, 2022, and a special meeting on June 16, 2022. Is there any discussion of the minutes? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to item on the agenda, City Manager's Report, item 22-191. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance to amend Section 10-93 of Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended to change the voting location for precinct number five from the Hampton Roads Community Health Center to the Charles A. Fisher Memorial Academy located at 1725 Green Street, and to formally change the name of precinct number five to Charles A. Fisher Memorial Academy.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can anyone speak as to why the location is being changed?
The health center is moved. She's here.
Yes, the registrar is here, and she could speak to that.
Madam Registrar?
Terrific.
Ma'am, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We are moving the precinct because the Hampton Roads Community Health Center will be closing in the fall, and the new location will be outside of the boundary requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We don't have any additional speakers. Are there any comments from our colleagues on council? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to item 22-192. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance to amend Section 10-96 of Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended to change the voting location from precinct number 10 from the Port Norfolk Recreation Center to the Mount Herman Preschool Center located at 3,000 North Street, and to formally change the name of precinct number 10 to Mount Herman Preschool Center.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We do have two speakers registered for this item. Our first speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark. Ma'am, if you would come forward and state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff, and Portsmouth residents. I watched a young woman today, 25 years young, speak before Congress very bravely. She took a lot of risks to speak in front of people, just like everyone here does, because it gets a little intimidating. I want those who are watching tonight to know that one person can make a change. So I'm here before you because my mother-in-law spent many years of her life committed to Portsmouth as a volunteer, Polly Clark. She worked effortlessly as a volunteer with the Port Norfolk community. She was instrumental in establishing the Clean Community Commission. She was instrumental in making it an historic district as well. I have with me Erica Nestler, the Civic League President of Port Norfolk. We're very concerned. The community center, like many other buildings in this city, are valuable assets. These assets affect our bond rating. When we let these assets go into a state of neglect, we are taking away our value, and we're putting our bond rating at risk. I hope that you all will reconsider the status of this building and maintaining it, and hopefully putting a precinct for voting, which is very important, in another location. And I will give the rest of my time to Erica.
Thank you, Joanne.
Actually, ma'am, unfortunately, our rules don't allow you to yield your time. She would have had to sign up to be a speaker.
I was trying to, but...
But unfortunately, those are the rules, so please.
Keep them.
Thank you.
As many of you know, this building is an historic landmark. We should, as a registered historic landmark by the Virginia Historic Landmarks Commission Act of 1966, we should hold value to anything that has this label on it as a registered historic landmark. We are a city rich in history, and we should always hold that dear to our memory. We also hope that you understand and realize that you may have friends or family who live in Port Norfolk. What a wonderful community, close-knit that it is. There are churches that have been there for years that unfortunately some have recently closed, but this community center was like the center of the orbit of that city, that part of the city. There were weddings there, there were community specials there. I went to a forum there, political forum, where people from City Council and School Board met. There were school activities and children's activities, and it is an absolute sad thing to behold that this building is closed down and left in neglect further every day that it is locked up. I hope that you will look at this building and consider maybe some ARPA funds to reestablish it, and maybe make it to where it can be a building where the community can embrace it again, and I hope you will just make that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, to the both of you. Thank you. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I agree with Ms. Clark that rec. center in Port Norfolk has been part of that community for years. In fact, probably along about 1957 or so, I went to my first dance there. So it didn't work out too well, but I went to my first dance. I probably need to go back for training. But on a serious note, you know, I would like to see the rec. center, and I think this council, if anything, we've been in agreement with is the importance of rec. centers to communities. And, Mayor, I would hope that we would revisit that and do what's needed to keep that rec. center for future generations to come.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Ms. City Manager, when we talked about upgrading our rec. center, was that included in it, the Port Norfolk one?
To be fair, Vice Mayor Barnes, I don't recall Port Norfolk being as one of those rec. centers for repair. But if it's the desire of council, we can go back and review that.
Yeah, because I actually talked to the Civic League. She emailed me about that, and that's definitely something I'm in favor of as well.
Mr. Battle, Councilman Battle, you have the floor, sir.
I'm in favor of having a special place in our hearts for all our recreation facilities because the most important things that they do is to help us to develop our youth. And not only that, our seniors in their latter years utilize these facilities. And the key element in our city is our human element. So I am very in favor of maintaining, remodeling, and staffing professionally all our recreation facilities.
Thank you, sir. Do you have your hand? Yes, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Just want to make sure we're on item 22-192.
I know where you're going with it, and that is the item that we're on. And I think if... Go ahead and finish what you were saying, because I was going to make the point, I don't think we're talking about closing a facility right now. We're talking about changing a voting location. Is that correct? Okay.
Right, I just want to make sure that the citizens are clear that this isn't a discussion on the condition of the rec.
That's a valid point.
It's a one-day event.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. This on the agenda is not to close the Port Norfolk recreation facility. What is on the agenda item is to adopt an ordinance to change the location of it as a voting precinct. And once again, Madam Register, could you please come up forward and clarify this for the citizens?
My pleasure. The Port Norfolk Recreation Center is a voting precinct at present. However, it is only used on Election Day. Only used on Election Day. My officers, who have served for a number of elections, have expressed their concern with the state of the facility. They don't want to take any friends home after Election Day. And it's been brought to my knowledge that the facility is only cleaned and opened in preparation for voting. Otherwise, it's closed until before Election Day. So that's the reason why we want to move it to a new location.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, could she introduce herself, her name?
Yes. Madam Registrar, could you please state your name? I apologize that I would ask you that.
My apologies. I'm Alexandra Abel Formerly Reed, the General Registrar and Director of Elections.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
So my colleagues on council, we now have the matter before us. There has been a motion and a second. We do have one other speaker, Mr. John Lifsay. Lifsay? John, sir? Please come forward and state your name and address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is John Lifsee. I live at 229 Mount Vernon in historic Port Norfolk, and I am currently the Vice President of the Port Norfolk Civic League. And yes, this ordinance is not about closing the rec. center, but about moving the voting location. However, right now, the voting location is our only reason for existence. As stated by the registrar, this building is used once a year for voting, and that's it. It has been for years. It was closed as a rec. center years ago, and we were using it as a Civic League meeting site for until three years ago, until the AC system failed and the city didn't repair it. This building was built originally to be a post office and fire station for Port Norfolk. It's been used for many things over the years. Please note that there is no rec. centers north of 264, so this is not just one thing. This has been going on for years where there's been no rec. centers, and this has not been either. This building is registered as a Virginia Historic Landmark in a historic neighborhood. Our concern, and we have expressed this many times to city officials, is what are you doing with the building? And the answer has been nothing. Really, the answer's been not an answer, but nothing is being done. Nothing has been done for years and years to maintain this building. There's a phrase demolition by neglect. And for those that don't know, that means that an owner, not necessarily a city, an owner neglects the building for years and years until it falls into such a state of repair that the owner throws his hands up and says, "We can't save this building. We got to tear it down." And that's where we see this building headed by the inaction of this city over years and years. So we are opposed to this move because it's our only, looks like our only hope for saving this building, and we'd hate to see this historic building go. So again, we'd like to ask, what are we going to do about this building? Even if we sell it to somebody that makes it into condos, we just don't want to see it fall down. And right now, that's in danger of happening with the way it's being treated. So we'd like to maintain this as a voting site, and I understand that those folks don't want to be there. We don't know what the condition of the building is. Obviously, we haven't been in it in several years. There was a problem with a leaking roof several years ago. I don't know how that is, but we'd like for the city to utilize this building or sell it or give it to somebody that would. We just don't want to see it torn down. We've seen this in the past with other buildings in the city. They're part of our fabric of our city, and it would be a shame if this building ended up going away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the city manager. Is there any way for us to do a assessment on the conditions of the building and get a report back to get an estimate of how much it would cost just to get the building up to par? Maybe not at full revitalization, but just get it to working conditions.
Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir. That was an excellent question. What I've been doing on Fridays is I go out into the community, and I go to the rec. centers. I started in Cavlin Manor, Jay Parker. The last one was the Neighborhood Rec. Facility. And I take staff there to assess the condition of all the facilities, and we come back with what we consider is repairable. So it gives me an opportunity to spend some time, and it gives me an opportunity to put my eyes on the condition as well. And so what I can also do on this Friday is at Port Norfolk, I'll reach out to the Civic League to come out and take a look at the facility, and I'll take the engineer with me, as well as the city attorney, in case she wants to take some friends home, and assess the property. And I can bring those assessments back to City Council so that you are also aware of the condition of those properties as well.
Thank you, ma'am. And Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, and now I was going to add to that to ensure the safety. Our registrar had mentioned that her folks were uncomfortable there. So if we can make part of that, Mayor, I would like to see this item deferred to our next council meeting. Will that give you time to assess the building as far as safety?
Yes, Mayor. It's a point of order.
Councilman, Woody, we have a point of order. Sir, what is your point of order?
The agenda item is about the name change, and so can we move forward with that? And if there's further discussion, that could be under items submitted by council.
That is valid. That is what the agenda item is, and we, I would recommend that we move it under another discussion. But this, the item that is on the floor, is dealing with the facility being moved as an election place, so we need to deal with that item.
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to make a substitute motion that the item be deferred to our next council meeting or pending the feedback on the safety and condition of the building.
And Madam City Attorney, could you make a ruling on that, please?
Yes, I just want to point out one thing about the actual substance of the item before I refer to your motion. The timing of polling is very important under the circumstances. We, if this place is not, if we don't approve this today, then that precinct will have a problem with getting that voting done within the timing, because this past July, the Office of the Attorney General, I believe, passed, there was a provision where they have to review all changes, and that has to be done within a certain timeframe. And so if we delay this, we delay that reporting, and then, and so it becomes a problem. So I'm going to ask you to reconsider or withdraw that motion at this time so that we can address this, and then under the items submitted by council, we can readdress separately the idea of addressing the condition of the building. But for this purpose, it's really important to get this provision done today.
What is that timetable?
Well, once the Attorney General will review it, once the, this location change is adopted by council, 60 days after that, a report will come back from them. And then we will have literally maybe a month or two before we have to meet the timing for notifying the public of the new location. So it's very, very tight, sir. And I think we can accomplish what you're asking in the section that we refer to items submitted by council. So we could, if I could ask you to withdraw your motion at this time, and then we'll reword it for that portion of the proceeding, please.
Okay, I withdraw.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I was just going to say that the registrar was saying that we should move forward with it.
Yes, sir. We certainly appreciate that. Thank you very much. We have had both of our speakers. We have a motion and a second on the floor. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We have now come to item 22-193. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $584,189 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriated said funds in the FY 2023 Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pretrial services in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
And Madam Clerk, well, first of all, there are no registered speakers for this one. Is there any discussion from our council members? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. We've now come to item 22-194. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance accepting jail diversion funding in the amount of $50,451 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriated said funds in the FY 2023 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to assist with diverting individuals with mental health issues from incarceration for misdemeanor offenses.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
And we do have two speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, would you please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive with Vine Farms Neighborhood. The issue stated in 22-194 is to assist with diverting individuals with mental health issues from incarceration for misdemeanor offenses. The discussion states that the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services already has awarded $50,451 to the Portsmouth Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services. These funds will be utilized to divert misdemeanor offenders that are diagnosed with mental health issues from jail into treatment. This funding and process has already been done without the knowledge or consent of the people. This voting is just to clean up the already-done deal. This is an example of how the people's public business affairs are being done in this city. I called Ashley Hall, the Behavioral Health and Criminal Justice Specialist, to find out how all this funding occurred without the people's knowledge or consent. She reported that the Community Services Board applied for this funding. The jail diversion budget is for case manager's salary for a year, $50,451. Questions. Where is the Community Services Board in the Board's Commissions, Authorities, and Committee Information Manual? Were the liaisons to the courts and jail and behavioral healthcare part of the discussion of this need prior to the funding request? How is this jail diversion position part of the reentry program? Where is the job description? See on the City Manager's Report. This request was submitted by the Director of Behavioral Health Services. How come the two legislators, which there are five up there, didn't have his name as patron of this request since they are liaisons to oversee the work of the department? How is the oversight of this position going to be done? What is the job description? What physician is reviewing these cases and when? The public has so many homeless people walking around asking for money. We have so many people victims of gun violence. There are no facilities for them or even treatment, yet money can be gotten for a jail diversion specialist.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Ms. Althea Mies. If you would state your name and address, ma'am, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, City Council. I thought that there may be some questions, as there sometimes are from the public when you guys are in the business of accepting grants of this nature. I was actually involved in the process of trying to get this grant reestablished, and so I wanted to speak tonight. First of all, I wanted to give a shout-out to Andy Warner, our Pretrial Services Director, to the Behavioral Health Department, to the Community Criminal Justice Services Board, because this was a joint endeavor. This grant was in place years ago. The diversion program was operating, and it actually, partially as a result of COVID and other structural changes, the program sort of lost its momentum, and we lost the grant. And when I say "we," it's a pretrial services and behavioral health endeavor. It's not for the Public Defender's Office. We just represent people who are in the program, and we refer a lot of people to the program. I serve on the Community Justice Board, and so I was part of this discussion, which we did have multiple stakeholders involved in the discussion of how we were going to go about trying to get the grant back. It took a lot of work. It took multidisciplinary collaboration, and I want to tell you that this money is going to fund a case manager who will be employed by Behavioral Health and who is responsible for taking referrals from the courts for the most severely mentally ill, nonviolent, low-level offenders who are in our jails, being held with no bond because they don't have housing, because they don't have resources, because they don't have support, and because there is no reason for them to be behind bars, other than because otherwise they would be so unstable that they would be primarily a danger to themselves, but also potentially a danger to the community. We do not need to be housing people because they are mentally ill, and this is our last line of defense. This case manager interviews people, figures out what services they have, what services they need, puts it all together, and keeps a close eye on them while they are working their way through the criminal justice process, so that people who would otherwise just be stuck in Portsmouth City Jail... Jail with severe mental illness are instead able to be stable and safe in the community. It's a great accomplishment for the city. It's a wonderful thing. And thank you for approving this. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Ms. Whitaker, thank you, Attorney Meese. Appreciate all the work that you and your staff do. The citizens may not know your position here, your work in the city. So, if you could identify yourself to our-
I'm sorry. Althea Meese, Public Defender, One Guardian Court, Portsmouth, Virginia. I was supposed to say that.
You're, you're the chief public defender for the city of Portsmouth.
I am, Councilman. And I also serve on the Community Criminal Justice Board with other stakeholders from the criminal justice system and pretrial.
Right. Appreciate all that, that you're doing. And as you said, this is a very important grant and opportunity for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm extremely proud that it was able to be done. It, it's really a very good thing.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to item 22-195.
Mayor, we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Yes, you're right. That one's on the mayor. Apologize.
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Now, we have come to item 22-195. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance accepting, with appreciation, a donation by Tabernacle Church in the amount of $1,000 and appropriated said funds in the FY 2023 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to support the food pantry.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for-
Move for adoption.
Second.
We do have one speaker for this item and that's Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si and I live at 3104 Garland Drive in Woodbine Farms Neighborhood. Agenda item 22-195 is for the City Council to accept a donation of $1,000 from Tabernacle Church, Chapter of the National Drifters Incorporated. When I was doing research on this church, I couldn't find the church or where it had the chapter of the National Drifters Incorporated. How come this information was not available from the interim director of social services? How come the liaison to the Social Service Commission did not have the liaison name on the city manager's report as the patron of this agenda item? I did inquire the address of the church and I didn't get it. That's the way it is here. We, the people, are at the top of the spectrum. We're to be represented by y'all. And we're not being represented because there's no communication from us to you to back. And you don't understand English when I come up here and speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item.
Sir.
Oh, we, we are in need of, we, we have the motion and the second. Is there any additional comments from my colleagues? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We've now come to item 22-196. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance accepting federal grant funding in the amount of $460,000 and appropriate said amount in the FY 2022 Portsmouth Public Schools Grants Fund Budget.
Thank you, ma'am. We are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion from our colleagues on council? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to item 22-197. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Ordinance to amend Article 1 of Chapter 12, 12 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended by adding a new Section 12-19 titled Authority of City Manager to Accept and Expend Certain Gifts to the City for the Purpose of Allowing the Acceptance and Expenditure of Donations Under $10,000 Without Additional City Council Action.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Thank you. We do have three registered speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Ms. Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live in the Woodbine Farms Neighborhood. Agenda item 22-197 is to change the code of the city by adding Section 12-19 to Article 1 of Chapter 12, which says that any donations or expenditures of donations under $10,000 doesn't have to come before City Council to be approved. As a representative government of the people, you represent the people, not yourselves. We, the people, want to know every penny of where the money is coming from and where it is going. We, the people, do not trust our government and this city. For any money to come into the city without the people's knowledge or consent is taking away our right and duty to self-govern. We, the people, do not have a finance commission any longer. We, the people, do not have an auditor any longer. We are not Nor-, we are not like Norfolk. We have more corruption in the financial system than any other city or county in the state. The elected have already made a decision without the people's knowledge or consent for checks and balances in our city. What's the benefit for ignorance? We, the people, want to know where every penny of taxpayers' money comes from and where it is going to benefit the people. The budget book has no divisions of where the money is going in each department. All the divisions of departments are generally speaking on salaries, allowances, benefits, other operating expenses, internal service charges, and capital outlay. Social Services doesn't have any divisions other than the ones listed. How are the people going to know how much money is being spent for the year for the food pantry? Or does it matter to you all? It matters to the people. We, the people, want to know how much money is being donated, by whom, and where it is planned to be spent. What the elected is demonstrating with this example is to do what he or she wants to do without the people's knowledge or consent.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Godoldik-Jetravski. And sir, if you would state your name, address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and other neighbors. I find myself agreeing with the previous speaker in one regard, that if you adopt this, we're missing opportunities. And let me explain that. This looks to me like an attempt to be more efficient and save a little time in these meetings. I have noticed, particularly since the pandemic, that there have been more small donations made by individuals and organizations to the city for distribution to worthy organizations and causes. And I really like that. And my fear is that if it becomes just an administrative process whereby the city manager or her designee receives these donations and they are routed to where they're going, we are missing the opportunity to demonstrate public gratitude. Now, we have been missing that opportunity. Two items ago, there could have been a moment taken whereby a member of council, and this could rotate among you, express your collective gratitude and the gratitude of the citizens of the city because the church that donated that $1,000, we don't know what their resources are. We don't know what they have forgone because of making this donation, but I am sure that there is some sacrifice involved. And so, for us to state our appreciation, for you as our representatives, to express our collective represent, to polit-, excuse me, to express our collective gratitude to the organizations and individuals who make a sacrifice for the betterment of others in the city, really sends an important message that you recognize it and that we recognize it as a community. And I think it would be helpful in terms of building bridges within the community. So, I would ask you to stay in the current mode, with the exception that there should be attached to every one of these items, a member of council to express the gratitude to whoever the donor is on behalf of the citizens of Portsmouth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Manager, you have the floor.
I just wanted to elaborate on the request. A report would still be given during the public work session, like I do in the city manager's minutes, where I would identify the donation, the place who actually, or the company, or vendor, or citizen, or what have you, that provided this donation. All I am asking or requesting of council is that it does not have to be an adoption of an ordinance. You, the public citizens, would be informed. However, an adoption of an ordinance would not be required for funds under that threshold. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmen, what, sir, you have the floor?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. And that's exactly what I was probably about to get into is where it's still going to be a report that's going to be generated from our city manager. It, it's just probably what, speed up the process and, and, and speed up the daily business. So, um, like I say, transparency will still be here and our city manager will, will create that report as, during due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmen, Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Did that item also include expenditures? No, no, no. I, I asked a simple question. Did the item include $10,000 expenditures?
It's for donations, sir. Donations are not expenditures. Donations are-
I understand that.
-funds received by the city.
Geez.
There's no such thing as a donation of-
Thank you for the clarification. And so, we'll-
Mr. Mayor, can you read the item again so I can understand exactly what they're saying?
Sure. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please read the item once more, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance to amend Article 1 of Chapter 12 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended by adding a new Section 12-19 titled Authority of the City Manager to Accept and Expend Certain Gifts to the City for the Purpose of Allowing the Acceptance and Expenditure of Donations Under $10,000 Without Additional City Council Action.
Well, she just said accepting and expenditures of 10,000, under $10,000. I, I understand "under." But I'm saying that, that includes expenditures? That, and that expenditure is something that you're writing.
For clarification, to accept and expend is allowing me to accept it and to spend it. But there is no expenditure until I get the funds and spend them.
That is correct. Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor. Then, Councilman Woodard.
Just for clarification, the $10,000 amount, how was that derived?
As we looked at other localities and they're determined and compared to what was a practice, best practice, the localities were at 25,000. But understanding the finances of our city and wanting citizens and to add transparency, I'm requesting 10,000.
Yeah. I, I, um, I just don't, I don't really see, it, it just appears to be a little arbitrary. That's why I was asking. And I would, I don't think it takes too much of our time in just voting on it as an ordinance. So, I would like to see it stay as it is.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard?
Oh, thank you, ma'am. And I just wanted the city manager to explain just to the citizens, um, just the definition of gifts when it comes towards this ordinance.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Gifts and donations. So, we receive gifts and donations from $100 to about $2,000 on the average. And that is when an organization or a person wants to give the city dollars in a donation or a gift to say, "Good job. Thank you. I want to add to what you're already doing." So, that's what we do in accepting these funds. Again, this is just a request. It doesn't have to be $10,000. It could be whatever council desires. But what you have before you is just a request to allow me to accept these funds, report on these funds, provide information, as we constantly do in, and except for asking for council to have to adopt the ordinance.
And if I could, just to add some additional background information, the mass, the vast majority of these donations are for social services programs that benefit community members in need. Most donations, most donations range from 100 to 2,000. And just to kind of bring some clarity to it, I think the reason why you're making this proposal perhaps is to be more efficient and get those dollars to those organizations in need. And so, with an example, if someone was in need, a community organization, we had the dollars in hand, we couldn't expend those dollars until an ordinance was passed. And that may take a couple of weeks, depending on when our next council meeting could be. So, I think, is that kind of what you're getting at?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's just a consideration. We have it before us. We do have one more speaker and that speaker is Ms. Joanne Clark.
Good evening, members of council, mayor, and staff. Joanne Clark. Timing. This may not be the right time. You got a lot of things going on. City manager is changing. Not a good time. Transparency. Maybe if the amount was $2,000, it might be more palatable. But right now, there's a credibility issue and I think you're all aware of it. We, we want to trust. We want to believe. And we want to hope and pray that you all are doing the right things for all of us. But right now, I just think we're trying to get a nice, calm, level playing field. When the new city manager comes in, we want to give her a break. We don't want to have to question everything she says and does, which we will anyway. So, maybe the timing is wrong. Maybe next year you might want to do this or maybe bring the amount down. We certainly want to make your life easier. We know you have a plate full of work that has to be addressed. But I think timing and transparency need to readdress these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any additional questions? Is there any additional questions? Are there any additional questions from my colleagues? Councilwoman Lucasburg, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Um, City Manager, I, I appreciate you submitting the item, but, um, it seems that our citizens and members on the council would like to see a different, um, amount listed there, so could we defer this until we could come up to an agreeable amount, um, that would be allowable for, um, this ordinance?
Go ahead, ma'am.
That would be fine. And what I can do is reach out to council and ask what is reasonable as, for this amount, if this, if you would like to move forward, uh, as far as to be able to move the ordinance for it, and then come back and ask what is reasonable with council.
Okay. And we need a deferral date, um, Madam Clerk, to our July...
We will have to have a motion to defer.
First, you need to, whoever made the motion is second. We need to change their motion is second to a motion to defer.
Correct.
And then we'll need a date as to when you want the item to return to council.
Yes, ma'am. But before we get there, we have one more speaker that we need to hear from, and that's Councilman Moody. Yes?
Thank you, mayor. I think, uh, Mr. Godolde Yutrofsky had the, uh, proper context for, uh, what this does. I think people who donate like to see it recognized, uh, not in a perfunctory manner, uh, in the cloak of a, a public work session, but in a public forum, and where people can discuss it, or question it, or whatever it may be. But, uh, I, I would vote no for it as it stands. It, we're not talking about a, a time saver here, so, uh, I, I don't see why we just don't leave it the way it is. You know, it's, it's not broke. I, I don't know why we're trying to fix something I don't think is broke to start with. So, I'll vote no for the, for the way it reads.
So, um, Madam Clerk, I think, as you had recommended, we need the person who made the motion to withdraw, make a motion to redraw, withdraw the motion?
And then make a motion to defer, and then the person that made the second, with, um, second that deferment.
Correct.
But I need to also need a date when this item needs to come back.
Correct.
So, that was me. I withdraw the motion for adoption.
And we need a, we need a second for that?
Who's the second?
And you need to make a motion to defer as well?
So, um, I move that we defer this item to our June...
July.
12, I'm sorry, July 12th, uh, council meeting.
And do we have a second?
A second.
And Madam Clerk?
Yes. Um, Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Mayor Glover?
No.
Okay, we have a denial of that deferment. You would need to either make a motion to adopt this motion, or have someone to make a motion to deny this motion, to deny this item.
I move that we deny item 22-197.
Second.
Vice Mayor Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Let's, let's clarify what that, what, clarify what a no vote means.
Okay.
We, we need to clarify what a no vote means, um, Madam, Madam...
Mr. Moody's motion was to deny this item. A yes would be to deny the item. A no, okay. Still saying no, Mr. Battle?
Thank you for your clarity. Yes. I'm, I'm voting yes.
Okay. Just making sure.
To deny.
Yeah.
To deny. Deny them.
To leave it as it is. To just leave it.
They'll...
Leave, leave the process as it already is. You know, like when they, you know, like when they came and, you know, the $1,000 gift donation. They would have to do that.
Yes. Okay, so we, we need to go back to the original vote. Are, are we all clear on what a yes vote means and what a no vote means? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We have now come to item 22-198, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Resolution authorizing the grant of an underground utility easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company, having an approximate width of 15 feet across a portion of 105 Utah Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmembers, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
We are, uh, in need of, uh, any comments from any member of council? Are there any comments from our colleagues on council? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
We have now come to item on the agenda of new business, item 22-199, boards and commissions. Vice Mayor Barnes and Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward for consideration?
Yes. We would like to, uh, bring to the table, um, to appoint, um, our interim city manager, Mimi Terry, to the Southside Network Authorities Project Committee.
Second.
And Madam, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
I can. Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
We have now come to item 22-200, items submitted by council. And before we, we start with items submitted by council, I'm going to take mayor's privilege to make, uh, a comment. Recently, there was a discussion about the appointed city manager and a severance package. And as a part of that discussion, the majority of this council's four members of this council...
Point of order.
There, there's no point of order recognized, sir. I have the floor. You do not have the floor. You do not have the floor.
Ma'am, may I be heard, please?
You may be heard.
Um, ma'am, this is, a point of order is a point of privilege. You do get to rule on that point of order, but you do have to recognize...
I have recognized it. He does not have the floor, and it is not recognized.
You, you, um...
The point of order is not recognized, and I will begin. I was elected as mayor of the city of Portsmouth to, to serve at the pleasure of the citizens. The four members of this council decided, the four members decided, that at, at this meeting, there was a recommendation to pay the appointed city manager a severance pay of two-year salary. That equates, if her salary starts at 200,000, which she has no experience and has never served as a city manager, just to inform the public, the salary range for our city manager is from 100,000, 180,000 to 200,000. That's if you're qualified. We have an individual who was not qualified, who was, a contract was negotiated by several members of this council, not including all the members, and a severance package is recommended to pay, to pay the appointed city manager two times her salary. Now, I would ask you as citizens, and perhaps you can help me, do you think it's fair that your tax dollars should pay? If, if this, and here, hold on, hold on, no, no, hold on, let me finish. The, the terms of this contract state that if she is let go within the first year, she is paid a severance of two years. If, no, no, please, order, we, we need to have order in, in the chamber. If she goes beyond, if she goes beyond that year, and I do not support this appointment, by the way, if she goes beyond, then it becomes a 12-month severance. However, I, I want the citizens to know that this negotiation was done illegitimately. It was done, not done in the proper order, and you have a decision to make. Whatever happens at this point, we are well within our right to do, but I could not sleep at night and look in the eyes of our citizens to say to someone, if she is terminated, or that appointed person is terminated, they will get $400,000. Sir, sir, we must keep order in the chamber. I have had my say. If there are any of my colleagues on this, on this dais would like to have their say, they're welcome to have it. Councilwoman Lucasburg?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I want to speak relative to one of the agencies that is affiliated with city councils. Um, it is ICMA. It is the International Cities, Counties, and Management Associations. And this group, uh, this agency is set in place for municipal government, cities, towns, counties, um, to follow the guidelines for which they put forth to help us to hire management positions, for us to work through the relationships, uh, with managers. They help them with us with terms and duties, compensation, health and disability, and of course, severance pay. Uh, and it is recommended by ICMA that severance shall be paid to the employee when the employment is terminated and is defined, uh, with regaining between six and 12 months. Now, that's the recommendation that ICMA provides to towns, counties, cities, municipal governments, when they are ending the contract or the employment of their city manager or appointees. Should we go outside of this, and of course, they have a four-council majority to do whatever their pleasure is to, to, to go through with this? I'm not in favor of this, because it says to any other appointee, if you come in and you ask for 24-month severance pay, and you don't get that, is that a discrimination clause? Is that a cause for suit? Um, if other persons who had their contract negotiated and they didn't get that, why was this one person considered for a 24-month severance pay? Now, I don't have anything against, they, they've already decided, they've already had a hire date, we already have a start date for this person. I don't have any, uh, problems with them moving forward with that, with that four-majority, but I cannot go along with a contract that has a 24-month severance pay in the first year if that person is terminated, and a 12-month severance pay in the second year if they are terminated in the second year. None of our appointees that we have ever appointed, city attorney, city clerk, all of our, um, appointees, um, city managers in the past, it, it is a terrible slap in the face to them, um, and anyone coming, uh, behind them if they are not offered something similar. Um, this is the guideline. Um, I'm a, a member of a lot of agencies, the Virginia Municipal League, Virginia First Cities, the ICMA, and they give us our guidelines, and I don't know how we came up with 24-month severance pay if they're terminated in the first year. And so, I asked about the negotiation process. I mean, is this something that she asked for? No, she didn't ask for this. The, the, the Personnel Committee gave her this, um, based on their own, uh, recommendation. So, this person hasn't even asked for this. This is something that the four-majority council has put in place, uh, for her as part of her contract. So, I am definitely not in favor of that part of the contract.
Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank, thank you, mayor. My colleagues are right. This is unprecedented, and I think it's important to note that the last few city managers, Dr. Patton, John Rowe, Ken Chandler, none of them got this kind of servant, severance package. Most were, uh, six months. One, uh, one was zero months. And all three of them, I think just about everybody in the city could agree, had more experience than, uh, the one that, uh, the four members in the majority on this council went to hire. You know, I, I think it's, it's beyond bad governance to give somebody, uh, that kind of s, package, uh, with that lack of experience. Four, four, $400,000, uh, if she's terminated without cause in that first year, is unheard of. And I'm gonna vote a, against this, and I think it's true that this is a council of consensus, but that doesn't mean, silence also means that you agree with something. So, if you don't, if you don't voice your objection, then people are to assume that you go along with it. So, I can't, I can't sit silent and go along with it. Not gonna argue about it. I'm just stating the facts, and, uh, I think the public has a right to know, uh, what's contained in that agreement. So, now, now you know. Uh, you know the majority that, uh, negotiated the agreement, and that's their, that's their privilege, but it's also my privilege to vote against it when it, uh, comes to this council. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woodard, then Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, number one is, this was a recommendation by the Personnel Committee. Uh, we had two closed, we had two closed meetings.
Please, let's have order.
We had two closed meetings, and there was no other recommendation from the other three council members, um, that sits on this dais. So, so to say that this was an agreement amongst four, or three, or two council members, that's, that's not true. Um, number one, I mean, and also, um, the, the appointee has the educational piece, so to continue to say that they don't have the qualifications to be here, well, that's not true.
Please, the councilman has the floor.
That, that is not true. So, also, um, this is not a payout of $400,000. I know the, the mayor and other council members want to insinuate that this is a payout. This is not, this, this is just a, a stipulation that's in her contract, and, and pretty much, we are here to support her when she comes here, and, and we all should continue to support her. But during my meeting with the, the mayor, a secret meeting, which he'll say, um, he already considered or told me that he was going to fire the new city manager as soon as he can. So, my thing is, my thing is, we're not even allowing her to do her job for the citizens here in Portsmouth. So, my thing is, we did not negotiate this contract in secret, okay? This was in closed meetings, and pretty much, if you had your input to put in, you should have put your input in. Thank you.
Thank, 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 thank you, sir, and, and, and I appreciate your comments, but I do need to clarify a couple of things before I give Dr. Whitaker the floor. I had a, I had a conversation with my colleague at Bangkok Garden on a Sunday afternoon at 1:00. I don't know if that constitutes a secret meeting. Um, it was in, it was in a restaurant full of people, but in any event, I was very clear on... on what my intention was, and to the point that there were no other options put on the table, I can be very clear and succinct with you to tell you that we had said that we wouldn't agree to anything, a number of us on council said we would not agree to anything over six months. Just to give you clarity once again, because my colleague is a little cloudy on some issues, let me give you some clarity. In the, as, as long as I have been here, I have looked at the severance packages of every, every city manager that we have had since I've been here. Dr. Patton's was six months, John Rowe's was zero, Ken Chandler was 12 months, Angel Jones was six months, all highly qualified CEOs of cities prior to coming here. For my colleague to misstate my intentions and, and question my integrity is just not acceptable, and I will not allow for him to sit up here and tell a lie. Thank you. Sir, you don't, I said that, and you don't have the floor. Sir, you don't have the floor. You do not have the floor. You do not have the floor. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
This is, this is to make sure on the record for the city clerk, that after we came out of closed session, there was a certification of the closed meeting, and each council member voted yes. And now, we are discussing a closed-meeting item, which if that were the case, they should have voted no. I would like to add an item to the agenda, Mayor.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda to move to extend the start date for city manager appointee Tanya Chapman to June the 30th.
Second.
Madam, madam, madam clerk?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add another item to the agenda.
You may, you, you may proceed with, with your, your motion, sir.
I move to accept the resolution to accept title to Lincoln Memorial Cemetery.
Well, we, we, go ahead, Madam City Attorney.
Can we vote on the amended item first and then move to the sex amendment, please?
That is correct.
I move to add an item to the agenda pertaining to Lincoln Memorial Cemetery.
We're talking about the other one that you, the first one that you moved to amend the, and add that, so we now need to vote on the, on that higher date amendment?
Right. We need to vote on the higher date and the, the, the other information so that we can get that information to the clerk for oath of office and other activities that need to take place and signatures. Thank you.
So, you need the?
Your initial motion was to add an item to the agenda. We now need the motion of the actual item that you're adding.
Thank you, thank you. I move to extend the start date for city manager appointee Tanya Chapman to June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
No.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
No.
Sir, could you please remove him from the chamber? And, and, and I do have a matter, I do have one last item that I want to read as it relates to this matter, and this is also for the public because there, there was something brought up. Order, please. I would like to read a, a part of the Code of Virginia as it pertains to severance and to clarify to the citizens of Portsmouth that as the mayor of this city, I am well within my authority and right to publicly state to the citizens of Portsmouth, who are the taxpayers of this city and who are the ones who have elected all of us, to be transparent. Code of Virginia, Chapter 15, Local Government Personnel Qualification for Office, Bonds, Dual Office Holding, and Certain Local Government Officers. Section 15.2-1510.1, Public Announcement of Severance Packages for Certain Officials. Severance benefits provided to any departing official appointed by a local governing body or school board shall be publicly, shall be publicly announced by the local governing body or school board respectively prior to such departure. Consider yourselves informed.
Mayor, may I have the?
Let us, let us move on to the next item.
Before the next item, just so that the public is informed, it's always important that our city attorney give us interpretation, and so, just to make sure that that was not a misinterpretation, ask our city attorney to elaborate on whether what was just stated is the correct interpretation of that law.
The, there's no case law on that point. The reading of it is exact. The, there is a, a, a code, a provision under the code that allows for a severance package to be made public prior to departure. There is some school of thought that that would be right before departure, however, it is not interpreted by any case law, and so, prior to departure is just that, prior to departure.
Thank you, sir.
Does I like to add another item to the agenda?
Yes, sir. You may add another item to the agenda, sir.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda relating to the acceptance of title to Lincoln Memorial Cemetery.
Is there, is, 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 do we, that's the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Right, Mr. Mayor.
And now, we need the resolution, so do we now have a motion?
Yes. I move to accept the resolution for council to accept title to Lincoln Memorial Cemetery.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for council to accept title to Lincoln Cemetery?
Because this is an added item, we would allow citizens to come up to speak on this item because it wasn't previously put on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we would need to allow for speakers for the?
Absolutely. So, I will reiterate to you what the clerk just reiterated to us, because this was an item that was previously on the agenda, and our rules state that when an item such as this comes up, citizens are allowed to have an opportunity to, to come forward and speak on this particular item. You will have to identify yourself as you normally would, and you will have five minutes if you wish to speak on this resolution item that is before us. Madam, Ms. Si, ma'am, if you would like to speak, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Donna Si, and I live in Woodbine Farms. I was wondering why this was brought up now without any knowledge beforehand, and how much did it cost? I mean, why is all this being done without us being notified? We're gonna put it up here so we have absolute control, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am.
Could we have the city attorney to explain why this is happening at this time?
Yes, sir, I was going to actually, actually recommend that. Can you, can you provide some background information and support for this decision? Madam City Attorney?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Ms. Si, you make an important point. What I want to explain to you is that, you may recall on the June 14th council meeting, you were presented on the cemetery memorials of the city and their condition. During that hearing, we talked about this Lincoln Memorial Cemetery, which is right off of Deep Creek Boulevard. It is one of the few African-American cemeteries in the city, and it is in disrepair. You will recall that when we talked about that, at that time, we indicated that the owner was being difficult to reach. Well, after we reached out to him, he was more than happy to talk to us, and we thought it important to move quickly because we had his time and attention. He has offered this property to us free of charge, and we are already taking care and maintaining the property. Last year, May of 2020, several of you community, community members went out there to help clean up this property. Many of our, our citizens have loved ones who are still there. There are some icons of the city that is reported to be there, so this cemetery is very important to us. And while we have the attention of the owners and the documentation to move this forward, we thought it important to add. Normally, we would not do this. There are a lot of other things on the agenda, but it is important that we preserve these things for our history, and so, that is why we're doing this today, and I hope that the community supports it.
Thank you, ma'am, for clarification. Mr. Godalde Yotrowski, sir, would you like to speak, and then, ma'am, if you would like to speak on this matter, you're welcome to come after him.
Mark Godalde Yotrowski, P.O. Box 50141, Portsmouth, Virginia. So, I very much appreciate the elaboration on this from the city attorney. I object to the way that this is being done, however. It is my belief that last-minute items should only be of an emergency nature, like preparations for a hurricane, or a wildfire, or some sort of natural or human disaster, and other items should be done in such a way that the public gets information about the who, where, when, and why in advance, and has an opportunity to do independent research. Recognizing that this cemetery is something of a cultural icon in the city, recognizing that we have a history of unequal treatment, not only of the living but of the dead in this city, I am somewhat constrained in what I can say from the heart about the disposition of the item. Justice deferred is justice denied, I have heard, and I subscribe to that theory. But I also believe that in doing your business as a council, you have an obligation to the public to lay these things out in advance and not drop them in as last-minute items, as, has been done quite a bit in recent times. So, I also would say that the transfer of this property to the city for no immediate acquisition cost does not mean that there will not be expenditure that comes out of the public treasury. And I'm not a fan of blank checks, so I would really appreciate a proposal that comes before you and us, the public, that has a price tag attached to it. There are other ways to, to do maintenance. There is public subscription. There is matching grant money. There is a state program that has to do with historic African-American cemeteries. All of these items should be part of the package and be available for, for the public to assess, as well as yourselves. So, I'm not going to offer a recommendation on the disposition, but these are my concerns with what you have, what you are contemplating tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
As, as this city is well aware, that cemetery is in the condition that it's in because African-Americans in Portsmouth, when they were buried, they were not buried in the public places, and that was a private cemetery, just like the others, because of discrimination. And for, for you to say that we should pursue grants and to pursue other type of funding as part of this package, that was not the case when the white cemeteries were built. They didn't, they didn't pursue grants, they pursued our tax dollars. And so, I'm thankful that the city attorney, and this, this isn't something that was just brought up, because under the previous city attorney, we had discussion about Lincoln Memorial, and we've had previous discussions about acquiring it. And I think that the advice that the city attorney gave us as far as the opportunity to do it now is right, and don't overlook the bigger picture of why we're even at this point, and that is because of the historical neglect and discrimination that has occurred in this city, and what we are looking to do is to correct it. Even if there aren't any grant funds out there, that does not inhibit us from doing the right thing for our ancestors, just like you've kept up your white cemeteries. Ours need to be kept up as well, and we do not have a short memory on history.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
You may, sir.
So, I know that there are public cemeteries in the city of Portsmouth, but in terms of situations of many families, mine included, are, the remains of our ancestors are interred in private cemeteries, and the responsibility for perpetual care falls upon the families. I'm saying that it's not all of one piece, but I understand, I understand the points that you've made, and I take to heart the, the spirit that motivates that. Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna recognize you on this, and then we'll?
Yeah, I just, you know, I?
I know, no, you're, you're gonna have your chance to, you're gonna have your chance to speak.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit, I'm not gonna sit silent on the reference to private cemeteries being kept up by families, when we know that there has been a history of the denial of wealth transfers and access to res- to resources in the African-American community, where we even still today see significant gaps in wealth between the black and white community and other minority communities. And so for you to suggest about discretionary income to take care of cemeteries when persons have been denied opportunities to access economic growth, to access mortgages, access jobs and fair pay, that's just totally unacceptable. And so therefore, the government must step in when there are shortfalls like that. And I'm not going to sit here and overlook and be silent on the fact that what you're seeing being addressed is because of racial discrimination.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, ma'am, could you come forward, please?
Oh, I'm Rhody Young. Sometimes I live on a oak tree off of London Boulevard here in Portsmouth, Virginia. To the four horsemen, y'all want to, okay, first of all, let me make sure I say this. I want you guys, no, sir, I would like for you guys.
Ma'am, hold on, just a second. So what we're addressing?
Is the cemetery.
Right, what we're addressing is the cemetery.
Right.
We need to stay specific.
That's what, I ain't got no word up my mouth yet, but my name and my address.
I just wanna make sure.
I know, but he talking about 20 minutes real slow. I ain't saying nothing but a word.
Ms. Young, you have the floor, ma'am.
Jesus, they don't waste 10 seconds. Like I was saying to the four horsemen, that I hope we do get the cemetery because the cemetery need to be taken care of, but I don't see the four horsemen taking care of the dead when y'all ain't taking care of the living.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, what is your point of order?
No, no, she said, we shouldn't be referred to out of name. This is a council.
Sir, sir, she did not call individuals by their names?
It doesn't matter, council is not a horseman.
Sir, I hear you, and I have ruled on your point of order. And so I have the floor. Thank you. Sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Armando Grundy Gomez. I think what I heard, and I'm not gonna butcher the man's name, you called him Mr. Atroskav, I'm not butchersman, his name. I don't disagree with the historical assertions presented by Dr. Whitaker, I don't. But I took what the gentleman was saying quite differently than maybe Dr. Whitaker was saying. I think, to me, I took it more as process and not necessarily about how we should fund it. And I mean, we can all go back and forth, and it's not, and Portsmouth is rich in history as it is, there's plenty of African-American cemeteries throughout this country, throughout the South. Those of us that grew up in the South, we know these things, it's not new. I think what breaks my heart is watching all of us devolve into these discussions that are, while fruitful, it's, we're dividing each other and saying us and them, and I get it. We want a turf guard, and we want to repair, I guess to me is, when are we going to start saying enough? Because, you know, I'm not gonna sit there and say, because, Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna speak to you through the chair, to one of your colleagues that's your brother or sister of a lighter hue. I get it, but we're in a day and age where, where are we gonna say, it's enough? But he's not wrong. Dr. Whitaker's not wrong, that's the sad part about this. And so, you know, where do we say we come together? We need, the issue here is, we have a cemetery that we need to take care of. Nobody cares out here who does what, whether a white man cleans it up or a white woman cleans it up? I don't disagree with my brother over here, I don't, don't misunderstand me. What I'm asking us to do is the public good, all of you up there, there's seven of you. We're asking for better. Nobody cares. Those of us that gotta work two and three jobs are watching you all argue about what? And we gotta clean up, and to, Ms. Graham, I guess, Mr. Mayor, what I want to ask you is, to the attorney, is a question of process. If we did this in two weeks, can we still get the mission accomplished, Mr. Mayor? That's a question to her. Because she said, can we still do this? So we're following process, that's a process question. I just wanna know. What's gonna change whether we do it today or tomorrow, but we still get the goal done? The end of the day is whether it's cleaned next week or next month, as long as it gets done. However, I do also understand that we have history here that we want to preserve, just like some of our brothers and sisters hold up Confederate history or history of the South. I'm not, I'm also keen, as a black man, what our lived experience is here, every day. And I heard my brother of the lighter hue back here saying racism, we gotta calm things down. But Dr. Whitaker was not wrong about the historical assertion. But I don't, what do we gain here by your cemetery, or a Jewish cemetery, or Hispanic cemetery, or a dandelion, or roaches and rats? We're not gaining anything, folks. We gotta preserve our history, we gotta clean up the cemetery and preserve it. If the city wants to accomplish that, to the city attorney, Mr. Mayor, I think it's admirable that we come together as community. We come together as Portsmouth. We do that. We do that. And if our brothers and sisters, that our white brothers and sisters want to help us do that, let's do that. Let's do that. But I don't wanna see us continuing to devolve. And what I don't wanna see is this up here, it's heartbreaking and it's draining. And as me as a man to say it's draining, I know, Mr. Mayor, but I got time, right?
No, you do.
I'm not out of order?
No, you're not.
Okay. I just wanna see us do better. You all are smart, intelligent people up there. That's a smart, intelligent brother right there. You're a smart, intelligent mayor, and we already know this sister's a firebrand, she's very intelligent. All of you up there, we have to do better. I'm asking for y'all to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And ma'am, before you come forward, I would like to pose a question to our city attorney. I know this particular resolution is dealing with us accepting title to Lincoln Cemetery. And perhaps you could explain to the audience what that means, accepting title?
Yeah, yeah. The devil is a liar, okay. Thank you, thank you for that question. What acceptance of title is, is the beginning of the process of gaining ownership of that. And so we will continue, my office will continue to work through the negotiations, we're gonna make sure the title is clear, that there are no liabilities. Everything that you all are bringing forth as concerns was brought out by this council in our discussions. And so this is just the beginning of the process to formalizing that. And so what I'm asking you all to do today is allowing us to move forward in that process.
Thank you, ma'am, for clarification, and thank you, sir. Ma'am, you have five minutes, if you would state your name and address, please.
My name is Robin Perm, I live at 201 Kings Lane in Franklin, Virginia. I have several deceased family members in Lincoln. My husband and I, on several occasions, has come from Franklin to Portsmouth to clean up. What I do ask that, in the process of planning, in the past, I'd worked for the sheriff's department, and they had the inmates come out there and clean them, and cut the grass, okay? In doing that, can you assure the citizens that when they cut the grass, that they don't destroy the headstones? It's disturbing to go out there to see your loved one headstone being destroyed, okay? So that's my concern for my family. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And ma'am, would you please come forward and state your name and address? And you will have five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you, my name is Melissa Williams, I am a resident in Portsmouth on Carver Circle. First, before I begin, I want to say thank you for taking the call to action to start to take ownership of the cemetery. I was a part of the cleanup crew that went out there and assisted with the cleaning up of the cemetery, and it was people out there who were assisting that could not locate their loved ones, but when we started cleaning it up, they were able to find some of their relatives, so I just want to say thank you for that. I also want to say that I don't understand how it's a lot of energy being brought towards y'all about what should be done, but nobody had the same smoke or the same energy for the person that owned the cemetery in the first place, where we had to go out there and actually clean it up. All I'm asking is that if it's possible, if you could put like a gate or something around it and move that bus stop from inside of the cemetery, move it up off of somebody's relative's grave, because it's like sitting right on somebody's grave, and it's kinda disrespectful to the dead when you have people stepping on people's loved ones that are no longer here. Also, Dr. Whitaker, I'd like to say thank you for pointing out the historic context because it absolutely needed to be said, and to say that it doesn't matter, this, that, and the third, it absolutely does matter, because when you ride around this city and you look at all the other cemeteries that look nice and all gated, and then you get to Lincoln, and it looks like a wasteland. So thank you, because my grandmother is out there, my great-grandmother and my great-great-grandmother is out there, and I come out there frequently to check on their grave sites and just to try to clean them up a little bit. But to the residents that live in this city who have loved ones out there, we appreciate this, because it should have been done a long time ago, but I'll say better late than never, because a lot of us do have loved ones out there that we absolutely love and care about, and we do want to come out there and visit a cemetery that's nice and clean and worth coming out there in the first place. So thank you for taking the initiative to take it over because it should have been done a long time ago.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Sir, you may come forward, state your name and address, and sir, you have five minutes.
My name is William Britt, I live in Sterling Point, 5109 Moonlit Avenue. I also have a business over here on Rodman Avenue. And I agree with this gentleman and that lady there, the deceased should be respected. It should not become an issue of black and white, it should become an issue of right and wrong, and supporting what's the right thing to do. And Dr. Whitaker, everything, and you and I have many phone conversations, half the time I talk to you, everything that comes out of your mouth is a division between white and black, and it's rather racist and is offensive to me. As a, well, I'm Italian, I'm not gonna say I'm white, I'm Italian-Irish, all right? And what you say and your body language, sitting back with your back like this here while everybody else is listening to what's being said, until you hear something you wanted to hear, all right, you're very disrespectful. You're disrespectful to people, and I think you, as a reverend, need to learn how to talk. You want the help from others, you want the white community to support the black community, stop being disrespectful to the white community, all right? I believe in black and I believe in white, I don't seek color. My goddaughters are African-American. When I dropped dead, my goddaughters inherited a rather large estate, along with some other people, all right? So I believe in right and wrong.
Sir, please have that young lady removed from my chamber. The one in the white shirt is back there heckling, please have her removed.
The bottom line is that people are people, I don't care what color they are, we all bleed green, I mean red, and you really angers me with the division that you spread with the city council with your rhetoric.
Are you gonna let him direct comments to me or to council?
Sir, sir, you do not have the floor. I have the floor, the speaker had the floor, you are out of order.
Sir, you're a reverend.
Sir, sir, finish your comments, please do not direct your comments.
That'll be fine.
Dr. Whitaker, you don't need to share his name, you have the floor, you have your few minutes left, please complete your comments.
This stuff should be settled basically on right and wrong issues, not racial issues, all right? I agree, if the cemetery is in disarray, the person who owned that cemetery should be held accountable because they got paid, all right? I agree with doing what needs to be done to respect the deceased, all right? I don't care if they're black or white, all right? And like I said, I've been here for the last couple hours, steaming, listening to some of the stuff that's going on with the city council. You know, perception, perception means a lot, how people look at this city council, all right? You guys are banking on this thing with the casino? Hell, we can't even get this thing together about black and white. You think that casino's gonna be successful with this bickering going on with the city council? Let's get to the point, let's discuss the problems, all right? I paid a lot of money in this taxes. My properties went up $230,000 since January about the values, that's $230,000 more I'm paying in taxes, along with what I'm already paying. Let's get real.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, ma'am, no outbursts, please. Would you come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Pamela Amstead, 1919, Atlanta Avenue. My question is, do you, Dr. Whitaker, know what Lincoln Memorial Cemetery, who it was named after? It could have been Lincoln Park, it could have been Abraham Lincoln, I'm trying to figure out where to get its name from. Second of all, I have a lot of friends that have family members that are buried in that cemetery, and I think about a month or two ago, there was a car that ran into that cemetery and practically knocked over every stone of her family member, and they didn't know it until they went there to put flowers on the grave. So I was wondering if the family members are notified that you all are trying to take control of the cemetery? Have they been notified, the family members that have families out there?
Madam City Attorney, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you for, that was an excellent question. This process has just started, which is why we immediately put it on the agenda today. We were having some trouble figuring out who owned it first and foremost, and then once we tracked it down, having that person get with us. And so these are the types of questions that we're gonna be asking and working forward on. And so I've made a note to do that. I will tell you, though, that we have a rich history here, and there is a website by the Portsmouth Public Library that gives the history of every person they were able to track and identify who was at the cemetery, and there may be some information about the historical piece in terms of the naming of that cemetery. I don't have that information right now, but that's an avenue that you can look into.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to bring to the public's attention, at the last meeting, we had Dr. Whitaker to give us an extensive report on his reasons why he, in particular, fired the city manager, former city manager, Angel Jones. And we did get some information as a council, and I just want to share a bit of it with you, because me, as a former member of the Economic Development Authority, I did have some information to dispel some of that information.
Isn't there a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is a motion on the floor, and we do need to deal with the motion on the floor, and that's the resolution. So let's deal with the motion on the resolution, and then you'll have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you.
We do have the motion on the floor, it was seconded, so we do now need to call for the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you now have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Of course, the information, I'll start over again, we received some information as a council that gave us more details on the information relative to the 409 McLean Street property, is right behind the TCC and where the new casino site is gonna be, right behind there. 409 McLean Street was conveyed to Norfolk County School Board in 1951. In 1967, the Norfolk County School Board conveyed the 409 property to the city of Portsmouth, so that was almost 10 years there. And then from 1967 to 2007, 60 years that property sat dormant, no real activity. So the city conveys 409 McLean to the EDA for development, and the parcel contained 31 acres, but over time, the wetlands had developed 14 of the acres, making only 17 of the acres developable. And during that 2012 to 2015 time span, I was on the Economic Development Authority, and I see one of the Economic Development Authority members here today, thank you for being here present today. So EDA, we entered into a development agreement in 2015 for an assistant living facility to be constructed on that property, but they were not able to complete that property, that development deal, because the financial funds were not there, and so they terminated that agreement. So it went another three years to 2018, where the resolution was authorized for the sale of that property. Well, during that time, they found out that there were some contaminated soils on there, and it further made the property not developable. Who wants to buy a property that where right now, you had 13, and then 17 of it is not non-developable, and then you find out that there's contaminants in the soil. So we'll fast forward to 2019, the developer requests an additional extension on that property. So all over this time, we're taking 60 years, 70 years, where nobody is interested in this property. And all of this happened before Ms. Angel Jones was even appointed as the city manager. So this happened on several city managers' watch before Ms. Jones even became the city manager. So the end deal is that it was closed on November 20 of 2021, and it was sold less than what it is assessed at, and that happens all the time with developments, but the thing- than what it is assessed at. And that happens all the time with developments. But the thing that is, is going to grant the city $729,885 per year in tax revenues. So, we went from having zero tax revenues to gaining $729,885 worth of tax revenue in one year. I think that's smart business, if you would say to me. But that's just one of the things that's being dispelled about why the city manager was fired for selling a property that was assessed at $2 million for less than what the value was. We couldn't get anybody to buy it or develop on it. So, we have someone now that's on the tax rolls. We'll get almost $1 million a year in taxes.
Thank you, ma'am. And Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. I believe we're still under items submitted by council.
Items submitted by council, yes, sir.
Want to remind our citizens that July the 4th, which is on a Monday, the Craddock is having their July the 4th patriotic salute. It begins at 10:00 a.m. If you've never been to that, you need, if you want to really get in the patriotic spirit, please attend. You'll love it. It's, it has the ambiance of an era long gone. But Craddock, I think they've had this thing probably for over 85 years. And they'll have a speaker, and they'll have kids there that having, riding their bicycles and dressing their bikes and things up in patriotic fashion. So, once again, July the 4th, 10:00 a.m., Afton Square, Craddock's patriotic salute. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I do want to make, make, make a statement to say that I want to thank the Urban League and the group Blackstreet for making our first annual Juneteenth celebration in the city of Portsmouth a success. A number of our citizens came out. Mr. Gilblin, who is a businessman here in Hampton Roads, and who is the president of the Urban League in Southampton Roads, was able to educate the community on the purpose for Juneteenth and why we celebrate Juneteenth. So, it was a standing room only crowd. It was a wonderful event. We expect for it to continue to be back next year in full regalia. We presented the group Blackstreet with a proclamation from the city of Portsmouth. And on behalf of the members of city council, we are grateful for all of the citizens who attended and celebrated Juneteenth holiday.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Right. The analysis and report that Councilwoman Lucas Burke just gave, trying to simplify that transaction of a $3.5 million property, 30 acres, being sold for $157,000. That analysis or a report she just did, that leaves a whole lot of questions still to be answered as to how a deal like that is even put forward to a particular developer. So, I would hope that in our future work sessions, we would get more detailed in explanation as to how that whole transaction transpired. For a city that's cash strapped, to give a almost $3 million tax break, or pay break, that is, to a valuable piece of land deserves to be examined a little more closely.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes.
And referencing land items and things of that nature, one of the people that we do hire as a city council is an auditor. So, I will, if there's no objection to council, I will add, or like to say, can we start the process of hiring a city auditor?
I, I think that we need to have more of a discussion versus just having that as an open item tonight. I think we need to discuss this as a council and come up with parameters, why we need an auditor, and what would be the purpose for doing that. So, I think that could be an upcoming work session to inform us what an auditor would do and how would they perform their duties. So, that's what I think is recommendation. And the city, city manager will, and the HR department can look into those parameters along with the city attorney.
So, if there's no objection for council, can we talk about that in our next work session?
Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Mayor, along those lines, the other option instead of hiring an employee would be to commission an outside firm to do an independent auditor. You know, once an auditor is on staff, they become an employee. They become familiar with people. So, I don't think you're really getting, at that point in time, an independent audit. So, and I think it's a lot less expensive to hire someone from the outside that would produce an audit that's, that has no appearance of perhaps not being a good audit. So, that's my opinion.
City attorney?
While Councilman Moody has the floor, I just wanted to remind him that I had asked him to defer his request to look at that, the polling place, that rec center. You were going to bring that back up in, at this point, so this would be a good time to do that.
What I'd ask for was to defer it to assess whether, start with, I don't want to hold up the voting process. So, if, if that's going to happen, obviously, I don't want to defer it. So, I would, I would go back on the judgment of our registrar.
Very well. Thank you, sir.
So, I withdraw that.
Thank you, sir.
Madam clerk, do we still need to take up a vote on that item since it was an agenda item, or we're not coming back to that? Very good. I just wanted to make sure. So, Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Just want to say that I attended a community cleanup this Saturday with our waste management team and also Stop the Violence and one more group that was based out of Virginia Beach, Two Seconds. They actually are a nonprofit group that spreads information about gun locks to different communities, and they came to Portsmouth to see can they partner with some of our sheriff department, our law enforcement, to see can they start distributing those gun locks to some of our citizens. So, we want to make sure that they, we can see to support them. I set out, see can they get with our city manager and see whatever else we can do. That's something that me, me, Terry, if you are, if you have some interest in that, or report back, I think there's something that we need to look into, those free gun locks that our sheriff department has. I think that's something that'd be very helpful. Also, I attended the Juneteenth as well. Our mayor did present the proclamation to Blackstreet. Like you say, it was a standing room only event, and I think we definitely set a precedence for other Juneteenth events that were going on throughout Hampton Roads. We had a great attendance, and a lot of people are looking forward for us doing it next year. And one more other thing, if you can, please send any Gatorade or any soft drinks or water to our Effaham YMCA. They have a, a free camp there, but they are short on supplies. And if you can, please make sure you check them out with one of your donations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Terry, do you have a report on any pending items?
Thank you, mayor. No, sir.
We have now reached item 22-202, non-agenda speakers. And madam clerk, would you please remind the speakers of our, our speaker rules?
City council rules limit, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you would notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is Mr. William Britt. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council. I took my time to come to this meeting because I'm extremely upset. These personal attacks on the police department. The police department basically is our line between the citizens and the criminals, and it's constantly, I see it coming out of the city council. I guarantee I can ask every one of you, under the detectives' division, you know how many different divisions there are in the detectives' division? There are seven. You know how many people are employed with the detectives' division? There's 38. And that's including your secretaries, that's including your researchers, forensics. That means, that's three detectives per crime, if you've got a murder. That's why this city is in such a problem, in such a disarray. Instead of concentrating on what we need to concentrate on, we're not concentrating on the stuff, all right? Like I said, you talked about this casino. Let me tell you something. I got a friend of mine, she lives in my house in North Carolina. She has lupus. She has kidney failure. I let her stay in my house for the last four years free, all right? She's a good friend of mine. She's African-American. She just had a kidney transplant. She and I were talking, and she said that once she gets her, her health straight, she was planning on going to a casino. I said, well, good. Maybe you'll have enough time and come on down to Portsmouth. It should be done by then. It should be done by next year. Her comment to me, and this is a black girl, that I'm not going to that ghetto city, all right? And this is the situation. This is how perception, perception, perception means a lot. And it really bugs me how you, as city council, are being perceived by the people, all right? This free government handout, all right? And, you know, it just irritates the living dickens out of me. You guys went up on my, my real estate taxes, or real estate exponentially, all right? Now, since you guys taken counsel, we have given away over $12 million in free giveaways. $11 million on a lawsuit pertaining to a car accident. I empathize and I feel for the people who were involved. I feel for the husband who was killed in the car accident, and I feel for the wife who was injured in the accident. $11 million. If that went to court, I guarantee it would not even brought $3 million. This city council went over and voted to give $11 million away that we do not have, all right? You hear, I've been listening to everybody here, you know, talk. It's all about what this city is doing for the people, how much money the people in this city has, and what they're doing with it, all right? We got Senator Lucas, $300,000. We got that statue situation, $150,000 of those people. Do you understand what riot means? Riot, do you know the words of riot, all right? What happened to the Capitol on January 6th, that was a riot. What happened at the statue was a riot, all right? It was injuries, destruction of private property, all right, and people out of order. That is a riot. It doesn't mean it's going down the street and buildings are being burnt down. It's still a riot, all right? Those people should be held just as accountable for their actions as well as Trump and all the rest of them, all right? I'm not Democrat or Republican, but it really pisses me off to the extreme when I hear this kind of crap. You know, this rhetoric from several council members, when I talk to them on the phone, you know, my shop is on Rodman Avenue, all right? It's a situation where it's 90% African-Americans. 70% of the people that live out there are elderly. The only one council person that lifted their finger to do anything is Ms. Burke, all right? Where they had, where Fairwood Homes to Be, Portsmouth, Chesapeake Boulevard, all right? They're using it as a dump site. You got these elderly people that have to put up with that crap, all right? You got by the supermarket, food line, Farm Fresh, whatever the hell it is. You got a homeless facility out there. You got 40 homeless people out there living. You, if they're homeless, there's a reason. Drugs, alcohol, or psychological issues. Nothing is being done to relieve that situation. I had to hear this when I talked to one specific councilman. When I brought this to him, he, his sociology degree, telling me that, why is that? Why is that? Why is that? So, I let him talk. I said, okay, you tell me, why is that? Because of white privilege? It has nothing to do with white privilege. You have people who, if you're any intelligent to any of you, you buy your house that you could afford to live in. You don't buy over what you could afford in. These people that live out there, been out there for 50, 60 years. They bought what they could afford. They cannot dictate or determine how that neighborhood has gone. It's up to the city council, be you black or white, to rectify the problem.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Can I ask the gentleman a question?
Sure. If the gentleman is, is willing to come back to, to...
May I, may I ask you a question, sir?
Yes, please come back. The councilmen would like to ask you a question.
You're a real bright and intelligent man, and I respect your intelligence. But I want to ask you this question. Have you figured out who caused the embarrassment to this council? Have you figured that out?
Once again, we said not to call out any...
No, I didn't ask you that. I said, have you figured out who perpetuated and caused the embarrassment?
Honestly, you want my personal opinion? I think the ones that are supposedly preachers, the religious ones, I think that's where the problems start, honestly. All right? Now, if you want to ask me another question...
No, sir. That's it, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. Gary Bahina. Sir, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Gary Bahina. I live here in Old Town on North Street. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm here to tell you something good.
Thank you, sir.
As I said, my name is Gary Bahina. I'm co-chair of the Advisory Board for the Portsmouth Public Schools of Career and Technical Education. Somebody, if you don't know what CTE is, CTE is a couple of things. In part, it's skilled trades. We have welding programs. We have other skilled trade programs to try to get people who are not students, who are not necessarily ready for college the first day out of, out of high school, to have a career. Not jobs. I don't use the word jobs. We've pretty much eliminated the word jobs in our program. The careers, where they can start out, they're working for people who are going to provide good wages, good benefits, and for most of the employers we're trying to attract, tuition assistance. So, when I speak to parents, what I say is, it's not that your kid's not going to school, to college today. They're going to go when they're ready. And unlike the kids who went today, the kids we put through are going to go without having to pay for their AA. Those are the types of employers we're trying to get. We have a number of programs. I've heard some people say that we don't have skilled trades programs. We actually have a very robust ability to give skilled trades education in the Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm finishing up a catalog right now for us to give to the school board to show them what we have available, both within our public schools and using TCC and using Virginia Ship Repair Association, which has some classes as well that are run through TCC. The draft report that I have, which will hopefully be done next week, shows as many as 16 non-credit and 13 with credit skills trade courses in air conditioning, in plumbing, in electrical, in maritime trades, in non-maritime trades, in shipyard, in performance welding, in roofing, in all these kinds of stuff. And 12 of these classes require no prerequisites and no testing in. These are available to our students. The key for all this stuff is interest. We, we've tried, we've tried, we've tried to get students interested in some of these skilled trades courses. And our problem has been, we can't get them interested. If we can get them interested, we will have the courses available to us based on the existing programs that are already available within our schools and through TCC. programs that are already available within our schools and through TCC. Let me tell you something about our advisory board. Our advisory board consists of both private citizens and staff people within the Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm a co-chair, my wife is a co-chair, Pam Kroom with Economic Development is a co-chair, she's a new co-chair. We have private groups like the Hampton Roads Workforce Council and TCC. Our job is to go out and investigate what needs to be done, what we can add after looking at what the need is, both on the employer's side and what the interest is on the student's side. I want to let you know a little secret about our advisory board. We're pretty damn good at what we do. Two years ago, the state recognized your CTE advisory board as the best advisory board in the region. Two weeks ago, the state recognized us as the best advisory board in the entire state. We must be doing something right. We're trying. We could use more help by people understanding what we have and being as proud as we are. I only have a little bit left, and I'm going to tell you about something new that's happening. There's a new curriculum starting in Portsmouth next year. We hope it'll start in the spring, but certainly by the fall. It comes out of Danville, Virginia, of all places. It's called GO Tech. GO Tech is skilled trades and STEM on steroids. It takes seventh and eighth graders in the career investigations class, which we all have, every Virginia school has, and it introduces them to high-tech equipment, high-tech futures. That's starting here next year. Almost out of time, so what I do want to do is tell you, we managed to get GO Tech to give us their teacher training bus for five days here in Portsmouth, for summer camps at the Boys and Girls Club and at Starbase Victory. I want you all to come out on July sixteenth, if you can, to the farmer's market. That bus will be out there. You can see all the programs that we're going to be offering to our students next year. You're all welcome to be there as part of that exercise. And Mr. Mayor, it's about to be embarrassed, he knows where I'm going. Admiral Hugel, who's with the shipyard and has been working his, on the advisory board, challenged the mayor to a welding contest. You're all welcome to participate. Let's see who can throw down the best bead. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir, and thank you and your program for the work you do.
Mr. Mayor.
You have the floor, sir.
Yes, um, Mr. Bahina, I guess you come in. Thank you for the information. So you mentioned quite a bit of programs, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, roofing, maritime. Are you saying that the Portsmouth Public Schools currently offer that outside of TCC to students who do not qualify for TCC?
Every student in our school will qualify for TCC. There's the difference, I think one of your concerns is whether they have to test it and they can't test in. A lot of these programs are, for instance, offered at the Skilled Trades Academy up on Portsmouth Boulevard. There's no testing in for that. You may have to take an OSHA course or an OSHA instruction so that you can use the equipment in there, but in there, we've got welding, we've got AC, we've got electrical, we've got roofing, when the roofing people come back for the teaching, we've got carpentry. All that can be taken without any testing in by any student. We already send students there. So if the interest is there, now, the career, the Skilled Trades Academy is non-credit at this point, because the instructors that we use, or that TCC uses for that, don't meet the requirements for an accredited teacher to give high school credit. TCC has other classes, some of which are doing enrollment like welding, and other classes which could be made available if they were interested. That could be, that could be made available if the students were interested. Some that do have testing, some that don't have testing, some with, for credit that don't have testing, some for credit that do have testing. So we have this broad array, we're putting together the list right now, we're going to finish it up in the next couple of weeks, check it over with TCC, make sure that I didn't invent classes that no one's ever heard of at TCC. And we're going to go out to the high school, to our counselors, and, and career counselors in high school, and let them know, we have the ability to get a student in one of these slots at TCC if we have the interest of that student to go into that class, to go into that field. We don't have all these classes at the schools themselves because the cost of, of, the Skilled Trades Academy costs TCC tens of millions of dollars. So the cost of doing this, not knowing which classes particular students are going to want to take, for us, would be irresponsible to incur. What we'd rather do, and what we, what we do, and I don't mean any offense to TCC, but I often refer to them as our fourth high school. We, they've, they've spent the money, they've sunk the money, they've sunk the money into equipment, they've sunk the money into teachers that are qualified to teach our students that we already send students to on non-skilled trade stuff.
Right, well, what I'm trying to just, what I was trying to find out is if your program that you're speaking to of those different trades was connected to TCC, because that's been an issue of students having to qualify for TCC and having other options, but I'll, I'll follow up with you on that.
I'd be happy to follow up with you. Of all the courses I described, about twenty-six, there are twelve that are multi-semester grade courses for which there are...
I'll have your number. I'll give you...
Be happy to speak to you, sir.
And the last thing, sir, I would like to say, if you would stand before, I would like on behalf of Portsmouth City Council to give you a round of applause, you and your organization, for being selected as the number-one CTE organization in the state of Virginia. Thank you for your job. Our next speaker is Mr. Leon Hammonds. Mr. Hammonds, sir? Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Leon Hammonds, eight oh nine Bowie Court. Well, after looking at the news there, I found out quite a bit more. After looking at the news, I found out quite a bit more.
Yes, sir.
About our city manager. I don't understand why we are paying a trainee two hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't understand why anybody, we would interview a trainee for two hundred thousand dollars a year. Nobody gets on the job training two hundred thousand dollars a year. You know, if somebody can explain that to me, you can hire me. Because I have a degree in business management, and I'll be glad to take your job, even though I'm, I'm disabled, veteran, but I'll take the two hundred thousand. And smile all the way to the bank. So I appreciate it. If somebody could definitely tell me, and it doesn't make any sense, evidently, somebody that, that's supposed to be interviewing or trying to find the qualification for a person, you never hire anybody. You don't ask a person that don't have experience to come for debt count salary, and then want to give them a service package of that amount of money. I mean, I don't understand what we got on our, on our backs. The city of Portsmouth got some kind of sign on the back, "Come and get it." But it doesn't make any sense. Evidently, somebody has sucked on somebody, or somebody don't have nothing. It's easy to spend somebody's money. If I had two hundred thousand dollars, I wouldn't be giving it to nobody. But it's easy to say, "Well, yeah, I'll give you two hundred thousand dollars, come and run this business here." But, but what kind of experience you got? It doesn't make any sense. And I'd like to explain to me how you can justify it. And the people of Portsmouth needs to have justification. If you can't justify it, then y'all need to step down. And I don't mean, will I like them? Or they did a good job? They did a good job as a police chief, that's fine and dandy. But you ain't never heard of a police chief jumping from one job, a police chief to a city manager with two hundred grand. It doesn't make any sense. But, and another thing, too. Anybody can be a mayor, long you run for it. But if you're not the mayor, stay in your lane. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammonds. The next speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde Giotrowski.
One last time, Mr. Mayor, council, and other neighbors. This book could put you to sleep if you had insomnia. So could the dictionary, but the reference materials. And this book has a lot of information that can keep people out of trouble in a setting like this, but you have to read and you have to heed. I cannot tell you that I know all the words that are in this book, but I'm pretty good at navigating through it. And I have seen in Robert's, oh, for those of you who haven't seen it, this is Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, twelfth edition, the latest and greatest in a long line of manuals that create a framework in which democratic process can go forward. City Council references it as one of its sources. So nowhere in this book have I been able to find reference to something called mayoral privilege. This deals with, this deals with the concept of a chair or presiding officer. It doesn't deal with presidents, governors, mayors, et cetera, so it wouldn't have that specific term, but I haven't found an equivalent term. So please enlighten me as to the origin of that particular concept. I haven't seen it in the city charter. I haven't looked for it in the state code because, you know, state code? I'm not sure I'd be able to find it. And there is no tradition of it, to my knowledge, in the city. So I would like enlightenment on that particular topic, because what it looks like is a fast lane to the front of the queue, and Robert and his successors are very clear about order, about doing things in an orderly way and doing things in an equitable manner. Just saying. The other thing I wanted to speak about tonight is, actually, I got a chance to do that earlier, unexpectedly, but as a process, the notion that council members can, all of a sudden, unannounced, add something to the agenda and take it up as a matter of the public's business, of the people's business, that is dead wrong. If you come up with a bright idea and you want to share it with your colleagues during items submitted by council, I suggest that there be a rule in your rules of order and procedure that state you would like to set a marker for a future discussion at some determined time, like the next council meeting. Lay out the concept that you want to talk about and provide some documentation so the public is not ambushed, to weeks hence, by something that they hadn't heard of before. We have a right to be heard. You work for us, and you're accountable to us. And whether that accountability is involved in the hiring and firing of your direct reports or any other matter that you have the right to vote on, we are the ones to whom you're accountable. Please demonstrate that you understand that by your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Armando Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the previous speaker, what he just said, because I was going to say, you know, I would speak to some folks up there that some things would help, Robert's Rules of Order would help for some more efficiency up here to run smoothly, and maybe a push button to, when your colleagues want to speak, so that way you're not having to look left and look right. That might help you be more efficient, just to help you out. The one thing I, I, I thought I was going to go in a different direction tonight, but I want to, what I wanted to say, I want to go in a different direction, and I want to speak to you, Mr. Mayor, but to one of your colleagues. I'm a member of ICMA. One of your colleagues brought up ICMA tonight. Your interim city manager is a member of ICMA. There's a set of norms, and I want to speak to Brother Woodard, to Mr. Woodard, Councilman Woodard. I want to be respectful of titles, and I want to be respectful of process. You would look at me and say, "A morbidly obese guy in front of you, probably not qualified to be a city manager," and I would tell you, you're dead wrong. The person that sits before you right now understands municipal finance. The person that stands before you right now has worked on economic development. The person that sits before you now works on equity issues. The person that stands before you now understands infrastructure, has been a civil engineer, has been an air traffic controller, all within my forty years of life. Now, does that make me qualified to do what Ms. Terry and understanding the culture of a city here right now? Probably not. Being, having the skill sets of a city manager and running a city is a very important thing. It's something I take to heart, being a city or county administrator. I'm not going to question the rationale of how you came to the process of Ms. Jones, but I am going to talk about what you're doing now, because there's a set of norms that Ms. Terry will sit there and tell you, and she's not going to, she's supposed to be apolitical. Any city manager or county administrator should be apolitical. What you all do up there, that's what you all do, you all play and roll in the mud. The administrators are not supposed to do that. And one that's worth their weight in gold should not do that. And what you all should do is have a sense of norms. And I'm asking you all to raise your level and not do this. If you didn't do it previously and didn't set that precedent, then you shouldn't do it now. Because what you have is your word. Your word. Your word to the people, your word to us, your word to yourself, because when you lay your head to pillow, it's not any of us that you're accountable to, it's your own thoughts. Is this right? I'm not here to question your judgment. You need to do that. I will say this, I want to encourage you all, and I want to encourage the mayor, when somebody has the floor, give that person the floor. Say your piece. Stop this. Yeah, I enjoy hearing, "I'm mad as a mug." I enjoyed it. I'm not going to lie. But at the end of the day, what I don't enjoy is people getting killed, people not having jobs, people walking out here and saying, "I make twenty-three thousand but can't pay the rent." And you're fighting up here about what? About what? Doesn't mean anything. I'm not going to question whether Dr. Whitaker doesn't have a good heart, or Mr. Moody, or there, you know, Brother Barnes. I think you all are all good people. I think you all are just approaching this bad way. So when Brother Woodard is meeting with Brother Glover, and you all are having a meeting of the minds, let's come within and say, "Look, we got to do the work of the people." And you look at him, and he looks at you, we got to stop the madness... And you look at him, and he looks at you, we've got to stop the madness, folks. We've got madness going on right now. We're in a not a good place, whether you're Republican or Democrat, and it's enough. It's really enough. And I'm asking you to stop. Somebody's got to be the adult. And I don't want to question Brother Battle, and I'm not going to call on anybody's names. And I'm probably not popular right now. I don't care. I'm okay with that. I'm okay if I'm not everybody's cup of tea. I'm okay with that. I like coffee anyway. Black. But I'm going to ask you all to raise your level, do better. But, what she said about ICMA is true. Look it up yourself. And if you all want to still hire that person, that's fine, but do the process the right way. But when somebody has the floor, Mr. Mayor, don't call them out of order. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph.
I thank y'all for allowing me to speak, and I just wanted to ask the question of all of you that was here when she was dismissed, Ms. Jones. Before she was dismissed, we had on the plate that there was going to come out to my community to assist me by the request of Mayor Glover and Vice Mayor. The first thing I addressed that I talked about, the H.R. 3684. And pretty much y'all know what it's all about. I don't want to do a rundown, but it was dealing with pipes, leaded pipes replacement. It was dealing with sewage replacement. It was dealing with the streets that are, you know, tore up in our city. And we as taxpayers, we pay for a lot of tax, and it addressed a lot of things, and correct me if I'm wrong. When I got the letter that I was investigating FEMA, and I asked questions why Portsmouth was able to help someone back in 2016, and I got a letter from Congress Scott letting me know on November the 10th, that was a trillion dollars being spent in the United States to rebuild America. In the state of Virginia, I have the breakdown, and I talked about that. But it was talking about everything that I mentioned in my letter to you all, and it was a seven-page, when Ms. Jones was in the position. I wanted to know that the things I addressed in the seven pages, one of them was Ecclesiastes and three. It talked about everything. I won't go down the history of it, but Mr. Moody was the first person that, he was the last one on the list that I sent, and I did it on purpose, to see how long it takes for somebody to get the message of Ecclesiastes, Chapter 3, verse 22, I mean, all 22. Then on there, I asked for about the contamination in our, our community for the pipes, leaded pipes, that is going to be replaced for clean water, $738 million. And it talks about what, what we were supposed to get to do the bridge and whatnot. But I'm talking about in our community right now. I hit on some things about, for 2016 and really some other times, I was a flood victim, and my home, 78, I mean, 75 miles per hour cracked my floor, but it also cracked the corner of Roya and Hanson. When I called for the city to take care of the sewage and Roya Hanson, they took care of that. Nobody took care, expecting my home to find out. But with Ms. Jones and with the mayor and vice mayor, they said, "Get with her." And I felt like I was on the path of finding out an opportunity, all the washing of my property, because I don't have a drainage. I do verify everything I have to say in writing, and also I have videotapes where you go across from my side of the city, which is Fayetteville, which y'all say you didn't know. And then I requested for a sign. Well, nobody came and addressed that. That was back in February, if you can remember. Go back and play the tape. Anything that I talk about, Sheila Joseph got videos, pictures, and everything. Now, I didn't want to say this, but I'm going to have to, because I don't know when I'll get up again. I spoke about how the zip code areas that a lot of people get things done, the well-to-do areas, and then in the poor areas, they are being neglected too long, including where I stayed. Water up to my knees in Douglas Park, Rafferty and whatnot, tow trucks come make money. Then, over where I stay, I'm in mold and contamination. My living room, I'm in a 12-room house, by the way. It's a duplex, five-bedroom, and a one-bedroom apartment. My son and my daughter had their own apartment, one-bedroom, at seven years old. It may not be important to someone, but when they come home to visit my daughter and my granddaughter. Could I wrap it up a little bit? I just want to say that, are y'all going to still be able to come and finish what you're supposed to have, that started? We already started with removing the tree, but then we haven't started marking the streets and, you know, get a, I'm playing on saying point-blank. We need a civil engineer to deal with our issues, and the civil engineer can do a better job of those that are doing things. Can we start finishing what they start, but not just about me, the whole city?
I think that, based on the information that you shared, Madam City Manager, can we at least check in with Ms. Joseph and see where we are in the process? I believe we can do that, ma'am, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you, and y'all have a blessed day.
You too, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Cedric Cradle. Mr. Cradle, sir, you have five minutes.
Cedric Cradle, 725 Bow Street. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager, and city officials. I come before you to talk about me personally. My organization, Unseen Tears, was established because of the, as we ever need of the city of Portsmouth. It wasn't established because of no personal reasons, because again, like a city council member told me, while you're doing this, you don't have no dog in the fight. That's where that slogan came from. You guys don't understand that a lot of young men who have died, they've died because of a lot of trolling on the internet. Back-and-forth disrespect, back-and-forth arguing, I mean, small, minute things that you guys may not know. But also, you may not know that some of your city council members are encouraging other people to discourage other people of organizations because of people's past. So I'm here to tell you that I do have a past, and I stand here to say that I'm not happy about it. But I went to the Supreme Court, and I did all I could legally to, to fight, and again, I'm standing before you. And what my organization does, we don't, we didn't come here begging the city for no money. We went out and used our own funding. The mothers used their own money, included, and the great city manager, Ms. Angela Jones, was the first city manager to met with the mothers of the deceased victims of gun violence. So again, some of the city council members need to check themselves at the door, because I don't deal well with bullying. I'm not afraid of anyone. I'm not scared of anyone. You know, so if you do have your friends, and you get them on the internet, and you tell them to do these things, and they say things about individuals about their past, I'm cool with it. But I have children that ain't cool with it. And when you affect my children, I don't know if you know me or not, like that. I don't play them kind of games. So again, I come before you because there's a need. I thank the Chief of Police and the Assistant Chief Jenkins for the program, the reset program, that I came out to the other night because that young man got killed on Hickory Street, and while we were out there, somebody else got killed on Hancock. See, again, I don't have a dog in the fight, but I'm out there. I gave the mother, I mean, the aunt, a letter, or the application for the victims' rights, for the gun rights, not gun, but gun violence victims, because I had it on me at the time. But I didn't have to do that, because I'm not getting paid for this. So again, city officials, if you've got a personal issue with me, address it to me, because I'm doing the work. I'm in the community. I'm trying to right a wrong. I can't worry about my past, because you're not worried about your past. I'm doing a more, I wanted to stop doing what I'm doing, I'll be honest with you, because so many people are coming at me, and I never thought that you being outside the political realm, that people would affect you. But it's affecting my children. It's affecting my mother, because of the people that y'all are sending derogatory comments to them. And, but, you, you expect the children of the young folks to listen to what you're saying. So I say again, check yourself at the door. My organization is going to provide resources still to the mothers and the families who are victims of gun violence. We provide resources like mental health counseling. We provide financial help with the headstones, which we're raising money right now for a couple of families, for headstones that are coming up. And again, we, we, we support every family, try to promote as many family members as possible, like Nicholas graduated the other night, other day, we had a break cook off of him. So again, I try not to bring negative things to it, but some of you guys are part of the problem. And I won't come back up here until September, because I want y'all to see, and I'm not going to mention no names, because I use to get a rundown of the names of the murder victims of, because now, Mayor, can I continue for five seconds?
Please, finish your thoughts, sir.
I'm not going, I'm not going to open that book up, because I've done it for almost a year now, and you guys get the picture, just like a city council member said, that they are tired of hearing those names, but the mothers got to live with it every day. But I'm the bad guy. My past matters. So again, I say this to you, we're here, Unseen Tears is here for the support of the mothers and the victims of gun violence. I'm not angry, nor am I mad. There's too much to be done to be bickering about my past, because when that young man died on Hickory, we were there. I didn't see nobody up here, except the Chief of Police, the Assistant Chief, and a couple of more people. So again, city council member, we are actively involved, and I thank you, Mayor, for the floor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. Our next speaker is Nicholas Gordon.
Good after, good evening at this point, city council and all those on the dais. I do want to speak just quickly to Mark, and I always mess Mark's last name up. I think the Robert's Rule that you will be looking for, I think the mayor is incorrectly stating is a moment of personal privilege, is what he's using, which would be actually approved by the chair, since he's the chair of the meeting, he's approving his own personal privilege. There's nothing in there that says mayoral privilege, but personal privilege is in Robert's Rules, if you want to look at that one, and I think that's what he speaks under. But that was just that, I just like to talk about different things at different times. I want to be very brief, but I want to be very direct. We have a very serious problem on our council. I believe the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, and respecting and expecting a different result. We come to this conclusion with the city manager, simply because we've been in this position, this very council, on numerous occasions, and have not learned from their own mistakes. It's very interesting that we had individuals who were against Brother Meeks being made the city manager because of his lack of experience, but yet bringing in someone else who has the exact same lack of experience at a later date. There were other people who were unable to be able to be in that position because of their experiences. I think one of the main things that we are missing on the council is that you all do not work for your own agendas, however, speak for the people. So it's very disheartening when you make a decision of a city manager who will be directing the funds that we all put into taxes, that we all pay, and you say, "When we make this decision, we are not going to allow you all to speak." That's very disheartening, because at that point, you no longer have the power to the people, but for yourselves. You all gratiate yourselves and your own personal agendas, and that is not what being on the council is about. Being on the council, you are now representative of every individual in this city. We have some who would like to just represent the black individuals, but that's just not the reality of what your job is. There are those who want to represent only white, and that is not the reality of what your job is. When you are on that dais, your job is to respect each and every person who was a voter and a taxpayer in this city, and with our youth who are not. I've noticed people like to read the city code and the charter and tell everybody what their jobs are and their specific things, and they use it very, very, very pointedly. What I do know is that the mayor of our city, because we are a city-run, city manager-run municipality, the mayor of our city is one person on that dais, which means that he is not responsible for each and everything that happens. Each of you have a responsibility and the ability to offer solutions. I've yet to come in and see anyone give us any tangible solutions that can change some of the problems, yet we continue to blame the city manager, the mayor, the people, Santa Claus, whoever we can find to do that. I've listened intently as we've decided that we want to spend millions of dollars to build facilities. One of the things that I've said is we have to start using common sense approaches to help and solve some of these difficult and intricate problems. Each of our communities has an elementary school. Each of our cities has an elementary school, which is attainable for them to walk to, ride their bike to, and most of them go to those schools. In each of those facilities, there's a gym. If we were to come and work together, we could easily turn each of those gyms, which would now have us 13 facilities, and we would be improving the schools, building pride in the schools, and providing employment. So rather than spend millions of dollars to build a facility somewhere that kids can't even get to, why not provide common sense things that are easy for them to get to? I think sometimes we miss the point, it's not about what we just want, or what we just see, but what we are able to do as a unit. I don't expect you all to agree on everything. There shouldn't be 7-0 votes. We should have 4-3 votes. That's why it's an odd number of people on the dais. We should have it. But when we say that we're working in unity, doesn't mean y'all have to all agree, but it does mean that you all are working towards the betterment of the people. What I've noticed is that that does not happen, even in our decisions. When we come in and we want to make a decision, you should really be listening to your people. One of the problems we don't have is we don't have a ward system where you directly affect the people who live in your neighborhood. You all do not care, and it's, and it's obvious by your decisions. Now, you can say that you do, but your decisions have shown that you do not look at what the needs of the people are and what the people desire. You all want to go ahead and gratify yourself with your own decisions. If I can just, if everybody else has had 12 seconds.
Sir, you can certainly go and complete your thoughts.
I just, and I'm going to wrap up very quickly. I've heard a council member go on a public forum and say that we have been spreading misinformation, lies, and rumors. But one of the reasons why we do that is because we have yet to get any kind of clarity from the members of the board, which make it impossible for us to spread misinformation, lies, and rumors. You have used a closed session as a way to conduct your business, do it your way, and leave us in the background. If you all would simply provide us with information and know that we are, as citizens, smart enough to digest it and know what's best for our city, sometimes rumors won't get started. Portsmouth is a city that if you do not tell your story, it'll tell, Portsmouth will tell the story for you. So this council has to be more aware of telling the story, involving the citizens, and please, please, please begin to lead with a citizen-first focus. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Sergio O'Neil, sir. Please identify your Please identify yourself and your address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Sergio O'Neill, live at 1420 Elm Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth. I'm actually here tonight on a different aspect. I'm here about the issue of mental health. I'm glad the first seat that CCJB, which I am a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board, was able to attain that grant, to have that position in place, to have, you know, so that we can keep our citizens that have mental health issues out of a, out of a facility that they don't need to be in. They're not, there is no treatment for mental health in a jail. So if we have an alternative, if we have an opportunity to have an alternative for that, we need to make sure that we actively pursue that. I'm here on to ask that our City Council and our City Manager, we continuously focus on our city's Behavioral Health Department and make sure that they have the resources and assets that they need, because we have a new system that's ready to come into place called the Marcus Alert. And for those who don't, those of you that don't know what that is, that Marcus Alert is sets up a system that when people are in a mental health crisis, it doesn't automatically go from them being in that crisis for them, for the police to automatically be involved in a, in a, in a preventable situation, you know? So it, there is a tiered approach to addressing people that are in mental health crisis, that we need to make sure that we, you know, that we are, that we have, our Behavioral Health Department has the resources to do so. Unfortunately, a lot of times, people say, you know, hey, you know, why, why does the police always have to come when somebody's in a mental health episode? Well, as the system stands right now, that's the only resources that they have. So that's what has to take place. And right, wrong, and indifferent, a lot of people, you know, get mad and say, well, why did this person have to get shot, whatever the case might be, you know, but at that time, the police officer may not know that that person is experiencing a mental health crisis. All they know is that they have a person with a weapon that could possibly hurt themselves or somebody else, and they have to follow the, 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 the system of, trying to get it right, the protocols in order to deal with that situation. Thank you. So, you know, we need to, I, I really want to make sure that Portsmouth is prepared for the Marcus Alert, you know, because there, there, the law was actually passed back in 2020, if I'm not mistaken. The protocol was for it to be in place by this year, by 2022. I think that all citizens need to be made, you know, we need to make sure that all citizens are informed about, you know, what that system is, so that we can make sure that the people that have mental health issues are getting the services that they need. And I'm speaking on behalf of that, because I have family members that have been in mental health crisis, and it has taken a lot for me to get them services. And fortunately enough, you know, by me being diligent, I was able to get them where they need to be, but suppose some, somebody does not know what services are out there. And then on top of that, we need to look at the connection with behavioral healthcare in our schools, because there's another issue that's going on in our city, and that's trauma. We have a lot of kids right now that are being traumatized by the experiences that they are going through in their lives. And we need to make sure that our Behavioral Healthcare Department has that relationship with our school system, so that when they need their help, when they need, when they have kids that are going through some issues, whatever the case might be, with behaviors, they know who to refer them to, and from what I was told, is that unfortunately, they are, because of the way privacy and stuff works, that it's, the parent has to initiate that contact in order for that child to receive the services, should they need them, through behavioral healthcare. I personally feel like that should not always be the case. I feel like that our school system should be able to directly contact behavioral healthcare, because right, wrong, and indifferent, some parents don't know that, or don't want to accept the fact that their kids need their help, because what ends up happening is that those behavioral problems as a child turn into criminal problems as an adult. And we're perpetuating the cycle. So we need to make sure that whatever we do, that we continue to address mental health in Portsmouth, we continue to make sure our behavioral healthcare services are supported, and we also need to make sure that we are doing our part to address childhood trauma in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mrs. Elvira Johnson-Williams. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
You will state your address, and please, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Elvira Johnson-Williams. I reside at 3313 Armstead Drive in this fair city of Portsmouth. Ditto to what Mr. Nicholas said, he said most of what I wanted to say, so I thank him for that. But I want to also address the fact that I was sitting there thinking, and I was trying to figure this thing out. I thought that each one of you took an oath to serve this city. That's what I thought, when y'all were sworn in to be City Council people. I thought your oath was to serve the citizens in the city of Portsmouth. I didn't know that the oath for some of you meant take care of myself. I didn't know that. I'm not elected official in the city of Portsmouth, but I take pride in the fact that I'm an elected president of a civic league in Portsmouth. What I do know is leadership counts, and there is a way to lead. And what I'm seeing up here, some of you want to lead us straight to hell. Then you got others that just can't do the job because they're being blocked from doing what they were sworn to do. I was thinking about something. We play, our city council is sort of like a revolving door. I remember John Rowe was the Senate Manager, he got fired. John Rowe was the City Manager, he got fired. Then he became the mayor. So my question is, as Mr. Nicholas said earlier, why you keep doing the same dumb stuff? I have nothing against Tanya Chapman, because I saw her as a police chief doing a fantastic job as a police chief. But when you're forced out of a job, you're forced to resign or be fired, you're fired, however you want to look at it, you want to, you're fired. Why was she fired? Why would you bring her back if she did not make you feel comfortable because you was not satisfied with the work she was doing as a police chief? But you're comfortable to bring her back here to run a city, even though you don't have confidence in her? That's, that boggles the mind. She was fired because you lost confidence in her job as a police chief, although, in my opinion, she was doing a fantastic job. She was moving stuff, and she was making people upset, so you had to get rid of her. So now you want to bring her back as the City Manager, which is a brand new show, so that she can do what I believe you want her to do, and I'm almost certain, almost certain, should she come back, why, I don't know why she want to come back, you're going to try to do the same thing all over again. Now, this $400,000 that y'all want to pay her just in case she don't make it the first year, which one of y'all getting paid? I, I mean, just like I say, follow the money. The people's pastor came in here with documentation on your council member, in writing, proof. I have a dream, my name is Elvira Harper Johnson-Williams, and my dream is to see the federal authorities come in here and take some of y'all out of here in them silver bracelets. Have a nice day.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is John Smithers. Mr. Smithers, John Smithers, are you here? Very well. Our next speaker is Nikia Miller. Nikia Miller. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Councilmen, Councilmembers. My name is Nikia Miller. I am not a resident of the city of Portsmouth, but since my household is financed off of the salary that my husband receives off of the tax-sucking thing called Norfolk Naval Shipyard, I have vested interest in the city of Portsmouth. What I wanted to do today is talk about perception. I am not a resident of the city of Portsmouth, I'm a resident of the city of Hampton, they hate me too, because I call them out on their BS as well. The first thing that I want to talk about is what I feel is centered to being a member of the City Council. You're here to serve the citizens of Portsmouth, regardless, regardless of political party, regardless of mon, you know, monetary situation, you're here to serve them. What I've watched over the last few weeks has been a lot, but there's one thing that started it, that really put a bad taste in my mouth. In the first meeting, when Angel, when Angel Jones was terminated, I noticed something that bothered me. When there were citizens of the city of Portsmouth who weren't being paid, who were just putting forth effort and desire out of the goodness of their hearts to serve on boards and commissions, certain members of this dais did not care enough to pronounce their names correctly. I can tell you right now that if individuals, if their names were screwed up, let's say someone called them Keondras, they would have it up to here, especially if they were not a person of color. It is a respect thing. The one thing that's on your birth certificate and the one thing that's on your death certificate is your name. And I don't care whether it's you, whether it's your secretary, whoever it is, you owe any person that volunteers their time to the city of Portsmouth to at least care about pronouncing their name. Now, you have the situation with what happened with Ms. Jones. I'll admit, I don't understand it, because when you have someone who's sitting in households with families who have lost their, you know, their family members due to shootings, due to violence, you know, I would think that there would be a level of respect for her, and at least a moment of pause to allow any discrepancies that you have with her to go under some sort of corrective plan, whatever. You owe that to her when you put faith in her to do the job. Now, you have a situation, and I honestly just cannot fathom why Tanya Chapman would want to take a position where she will forever have an asterisk by her name. She will never be respected because she got the position due to drama. Me personally, I couldn't do that, because I could never be in a position where everything that I did in that role was questioned. $400,000 in severance? When you have a commu, you know, a rec center that you were just talking about, that's got creepy-crawly things all over it that the community can't use? You know, we can talk about cemeteries, I'm passionate about cemeteries. There is one, there is a prominent African-American cemetery not half a mile from my house that was restored with grant money in the city of Hampton. I, I believe in the restoration of black cemeteries that hold our history, but I also believe in being smart. And the fact of the matter is, is that the discussion about grants was not about somebody trying to diminish the ability for that cemetery to be, can I finish?
Please.
It's not for them to diminish the ability for that cemetery to be restored, it's to give them the opportunity to use funds that can come from somewhere else, that the city of Portsmouth can use for other things, like the severance package. So, to close, what I'm saying is I have the utmost respect for individuals who have passion about what it is that they are trying, trying to accomplish for their cities. Councilman Lucas Burke, Mayor Glover, Councilman Moody, I appreciate you for having passion even though you knew that the odds were stacked against what you were trying to accomplish. I can appreciate that, and sometimes you got to throw an F-bomb. Madam, Madam Terry, if you got a job that, that requires skill, I'll, I'll pass you my resume and take a quarter of the money that the city manager with no experience is coming to Portsmouth with. But in severance, I'm going to ask for double. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no additional business, is there any additional business for us to conduct this evening? Seeing none?
Excuse me, excuse me.
This, sir, that, this adjourns the meeting, the speakers have already been spoken. If there's no additional business for the order, this meeting is adjourned.